Regular meeting for September 18th. The now in session, please rise for the President. The President. The United States of America and through the recovery of which stands one nation under God in the business of liberty and justice for all. For the clerk, please call vote.
Alden Buoyan.
Here.
Corica, here. Holleran, here. Johnson, here. Lewis.
Here.
Moranti.
Here.
Nisan.
Here.
Rosenthal.
Here.
Sarah.
Yes.
Lolo.
Here.
Presidente Pedro.
Can I have a motion to discuss the meeting events of the August 21st meeting and place tomorrow on file? Duan? Second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. The motion is suspended with the city treasurer's report as it understood at first. We got a meeting and place it on file. Right motion. Rob, second. Irene. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Copies of... Holden's desk of all committee reports. I have a motion and second to place the committee reports on file. First. Malcolm, a second. Rich. All in favor, signify please by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion is carried. On the county communications committee planning board, I sent us a letter to know signifying that there will be no significant county or county committee impacts associated with the adoption of proposed law number 21 number five, which is on your desk. They have a motion and second to receive the communication and place it on file. Duan, second. Irene. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We have the list of bills. On the desk, any questions? Do you have any other with the middle panelist? These are dollar... What's his name again?
Dollar control officer.
Dollar control officer.
Does the dollar control officer also places the bags that come from the coop stand there?
No, I believe it's Timmy.
Any other questions about this list? No, in that case, can I have a motion and a second to the bills? Introduction? Rob, a second. John.
I have a question. There was a great set at the bottom about the Perry Street Bridge.
Craig Manning is an engineer.
Thank you, Craig.
Roll call vote, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Okay, resolution. Begin with the point of interest and deeds. Further discussion? Can I have a... Roll call vote.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a consent agreement with strong outcomes to services to provide to the conservation advisory committee, council. Having explained last week, this is already purported. This is just to hire someone to help prepare the final document. Any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Next resolution authorizes the chief of police to execute a memorandum of understanding of the Hudson City School. As we know, we discussed last week, this is to handle the care initiative. Come on, explain what that was last week. Are there any more questions? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a contract engagement with the Laverde Group for the engineers continuing to complete grant rated projects for the city through July 31st of 2019. Any questions? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Next resolution is to compensate the middle step family circus $800 out of the event's award amount. Any questions? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Corica.
I'm sorry, aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
I'm sorry, I think we already voted on number four, but I do have a quick question.
What plant did the bars produce for the city before? Do we know?
I don't think we've heard back from the city, but we're in town.
We've just been moving a country.
Yes. A resolution authorizing the mayor to obtain appraisals on real property owned by the city. This is, of course, to begin the process of figuring out what building we might vote for sale if we were, if we consider moving into John Allen Edwards School. Any questions?
Just so the listing of the buildings, that's all the buildings, right? So city hall, these apartment, take care.
Yes, I think the other two are in the charter, city courts and, what am I losing? And police state. Yeah, Washington Heights, did you hear what was... Can I roll call vote, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Now, the seventh resolution is to, money set aside as part of the two thousand eight budget process for compensation committee to administer salary increases. This was introduced at our last meeting. Any discussion? Irene.
How much more work does the committee have to do in order to have looked at and assessed all department heads as well as the part-time folks? Exactly, from what I read last year before I was on the council, the disparity among the part-time workers, and probably eventually there'll be some disparity, but it seemed to have just grown to be that way. And I'm wondering, I believe we probably have to transfer funds in order to affect these, these increases.
No, these are budgeted for this year.
Right, I think it's in the contingency.
Oh, okay.
But Tracy, do you, can you give us a sense of, I think you're on the committee now?
I was on the committee.
Oh, you go down, sorry.
And the mayor also was here, who's on the committee, as well as of the department heads, B E and department heads. And one decision also made was to raise all part-time workers to $15 an hour. However, that was not made, decided to retroactively this year. That could still be done. I don't know what the actual consequences would be, you know, financially, we'd have to ask Heather, but that is a possibility.
So that's, I'm sorry. So for the part-time, those fifteen, that's just a consideration, it's nothing with...
No, that was, we resolved to definitely do it in January.
Okay.
The question now would be, would we want to even do that retroactive to this year? Because these, these raises have gone up here, how retroactive to this year?
If, if, if we, if we pass it?
Yes, if we pass it, correct.
So that has been, and I think it's...
In January, definitely.
Right. I find it useful at some point, just to informally hear from the committee, the department heads that didn't get a raise and what was the thinking and, you know, just some of the processes there. Did you find that there was a process that would be useful year over year to look at?
Well, that's definitely, that's definitely the agenda of your committee, to come up with that. Of course, there's, some of this page is C S E A.
Right, right.
Developed, as you know, from experience as treasurer. Certain department heads didn't ask for a raise. That's part of it. Yes?
I agree with Alden and Holleran, that I think...
I know.
But, you know, I don't, I think this council should give some great consideration and maybe hold off on it because, you know, from, from what I've been hearing consistently, you know, the youth department is never even considered. So maybe that department didn't ask because they're never considered. So they maybe felt like, well, they're not going to look at us to give us any raises, you know, and I'm not taking away the work from the treasurer, the city clerk, all call enforcement, they all do a great job, you know, but that's not considering all the departments. And also, you know, it was in the budget. But what about next year? Does the taxpayers have to pay more because of these raises? Like, you know, this is also something that we need to consider because a lot of people are in a situation where they're being pushed out of their homes. So it's just something for us to consider, to raise. It's a lot of money to consider all the raises, especially for three people. Because departments should definitely consider.
That's, the part-time raise to $50,000 an hour may affect the youth department. The bulk of part-time employees are in the youth department. So that's, as I said, that, the resolution of the compensation committee is to definitely do that for the 2019 budget. And we could do it between now and the end of the year to do that retroactive. You know, some of the work on resolution for that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, so the $50,000 that was set aside, that was approved from the prior council for this year, so we're spending approximately $25,000, the other $25,000 is...
Stays in general fund. And that, that's what I was saying, if you wanted to go retroactively...
So we could look at, there's an opportunity to talk about it too, and everybody else is saying.
Yes, Heather, come up with a figure of what that means.
And at this point, they, even though it's an opportunity, but, you know, I would like to see that opportunity handled all at the same time, rather than just, we vote on these three tonight and consider the other ones. And then when they come around, with my experience, they always push to the side of one, let's think about next year, it's not enough money, it's not, and, and, and it's enough is enough, we need to help them. So I think it should be all on one paper with all, who was going to get a raise, rather than we go on just three and then look at the other ones. All of them should be on one sheet. It's $50,000, break it down. The B E A, whether you want to have it a public meeting, as most people would like, or you have it privately, but, you know, consider everybody on one page.
Tom, what would that look like? So if you, if the B E A looked at the part-timers for this year for the other $25,000, it's like, how would that process work or...
Well, it's the compensation committee, it's more than just...
Okay, compensation, you got it, okay.
Like I said, I think the first thing to do would be ask Heather what the consequences would be if we retroactive, if we pay this $15 an hour for this past year. Okay, imagine, you know, like, yeah, sure, get that done. Are you, is there a proposal or an...
I would, we, we on that right now, then I would like to make...
So the first thing, you have the introduction, a second, I'm just...
We're going to...
You have the introduction and a second on the present resolution.
I was going to say, we table the resolution.
Okay, there's a motion to table the resolution. Is there a second to that motion?
Nobody left, okay.
I'm making the second.
Okay. Mr. Roll call, or... All in favor of tabling this, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, then we'll have to roll call.
Alden Buoyan, this is on tabling the resolution. Alden Buoyan.
Nay.
Corica.
I hope everyone understands that tabling the resolution doesn't mean get rid of it, it means to have a discussion about what we just discussed and then bring it back to the table. No. I'm going to ask you. I'm sorry.
Holleran.
I support the idea that before these raises become effective, if, if the resolution isn't tabled and it does pass, that we have a resolution here, a separate one, that lays it out for, for the part-time folks. And with that, I hope not to table.
Johnson.
Abstain.
Lewis. Moranti.
Abstain.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye, I give a nay, but I echo, I think it's a comment, I think it worked out.
Sarah.
Abstain.
Lolo.
Nay, and echo, I think as well, we could agree.
We have three ayes to table the resolution, we have four nays and three extensions, so currently the vote to table has been defeated.
Okay, I understand. So, we're voting on the resolution. Can I have a roll call vote for that, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Corica. Holleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Abstain.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
No.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Abstain.
Lolo.
Aye.
De Pedro.
Abstain. And I want to make it clear, I would definitely, it passes, right?
Yes.
I would definitely see to it that there is a resolution considering raising retroactively to $15 for part-time workers.
That's beautiful, that's just so fantastic.
Mr. President? Yes, sir. I just hope that it doesn't fall asleep.
Thank you.
Okay? It doesn't get lost in sauce.
Thank you.
I drink a lot of coffee with salsa. Okay, I agree with you. Okay, we have some new resolutions now. A resolution to issue a request for proposal to engage in feasibility study on the acquisition of used John Edwards to the city municipal offices. So this is really just the first stage of trying to look into whether we can approve this to John Edwards. So I'll need an introduction and a second for resolution. Come on, a second. Malcolm, roll call vote, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Another physical study. This one authorizes the mayor to issue a request for proposal for feasibility study to determine making city hall B E A compliant. Any conversation for this?
So I see there is no designated amount, how much is going to be cost, like, do we have any idea about that?
It's, it's not been included.
Yeah, I think what will happen is there'll be a request for proposal, like we always do, we'll be looking for the lowest responsible bidder. So those bids will come in, they'll look at the scope of what's necessary, and then, you know, they'll have the benefit of what those numbers actually are. It's my understanding that the feasibility study itself could be somewhat significant with the mayor's office, so that's my understanding, it'd be somewhere between 30 to 40.
Absolutely, but that's a, that's a guess. And we would give proposals, just like the past resolution you voted for, feasibility study for moving into John Allen, or it's a guess on how much that's going to be too. But I think these are two important steps for the city of Hudson, to educate itself, to know what we're dealing with, so we can intelligently make decisions where our future will be.
The feasibility study to make city hall B E A compliant, has this ever done before?
No, no, no. Is that one?
Has that ever done before?
Not to my knowledge. I know that there have been people who've come in and given ideas, what I've been told following up with the past mayors, but there's never been a study done, it's been more of a casual conversation.
Any questions about that? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, the feasibility study, is it just for access, but also for the bathrooms and everything, to make people...
It will be everything.
B E A compliant, which means the entire, as defined by, you know, standard of B E A compliant, not just access.
Yes, sir. And just to, just to restate, this is, we're authorizing the R F P to allow for us to find out what the cost would be, and there's no cost associated with us.
And what's that? Got an introduction and a second. Rob? Duan? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Holleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Lewis, I'm sorry, Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Okay, the next one is authorizing transfer of funds within the public or cemetery, water and sewer accounts. Questions? I do a statement from Aunt Parry on how this all came about, apparently. As a general, as the resolution generally explains, we had a contingency of $55,000 on a $465,000 project, or a percent. We encountered issues not uncommon with projects like this that require changeovers. There was a water main in the way that had to be relocated, a line we believed to, I s, no, this doesn't make sense, but, Starland actually had a sewage connection, twice it was only if there was a storm line, we had a sewage connection, which we had to divert to a sewer main. The catastrophic water main failure that depressurized the whole system, as we all recall, also washed out tons of construction material that had to be replaced, expanded the amount of pace street, and there were material overages. The contingency covered all the additional expenses, but it did not cover the national grid bill. So there, that's an explanation for, you know, I read that for the wrong resolution, which skipped, for the sake of... That was a resolution sixty, which is, so let's just skip to that. So this is a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds to cover unforeseen national grid utility relocation costs.
So we're going to skip to that for now, is that...
Any further questions about... Can I have an introduction and a second? Come on, second. Irene. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Abstain. And back to another ten, just standard lines, which is, that sort of happened every month, but labs transfer of funds. But an introduction and a second. Rob? Second. John? Roll call vote, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Corica.
Aye.
Holleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro. Carry.
We have a series of nominations. Resolution number eleven, we're accepting a nomination from, uh... Oh, S B K, of 250, I'm sorry, to the youth department. But an introduction and a second, please. Tiffany, second, please. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Corica.
I just would like to say that S B K is glad and also happy to donate the $250, looking out for the youth, this is the heart of S B K, and because I'm chair of the board, I will abstain.
Holleran.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Lolo.
Aye.
Presidente Pedro.
Abstain. And resolution number thirteen, authorizing the transfer of funds between the senior account. One more question? Probably a review of donation, donation of $500 to the youth department. But an introduction and a second, please. Roll call, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
And Di Pedro.
I'm staying.
Carri.
Number thirteen, the resolution authorizing a transfer of funds between two different senior accounts, moving money from the grants and donations to lights and heat and materials and supplies. An introduction in a second, please. Anyone? Kamal? Ron? Roll call vote please.
Alvin Bouyan.
Aye.
Karika.
Aye.
Hallery.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenti Pedro.
I'm staying. Resolution number fourteen, also a transfer of funds in the youth department from their donations, materials and supplies concession. But an introduction in a second, please. Tiffany. And Kamal. Roll call vote please.
Alvin Bouyan.
Aye.
Karika.
Aye.
Hallery.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenti Pedro.
I'm staying. Resolution number fifteen, accepts donations to the Hudson Youth Department and authorizes a budget transfer. I have a question about this, Nick, does this mean the community dinners are no longer?
No, it does not mean that they are no longer, we'll still be doing the community dinners, we're just adjusting the way that we fund them.
Okay.
But every Tuesday, five-thirty, anybody in the community is welcome. Delicious food.
And have an introduction in a second. Tiffany. Roll call vote please.
Alvin Bouyan.
Aye.
Karika.
Aye.
Hallery.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenti Pedro.
I'm staying.
Carri.
Okay, there are two local laws that are going on today. The first one, as you know, is to inform the James County State Law and the Air Drive and Water and Water Systems, which I believe Rich has handled until now, and have already said, and have any questions? Can I have a motion, an introduction in a second? John and Rich. Roll call vote please.
Alvin Bouyan.
Aye.
Karika.
I'm staying.
Hallery.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenti Pedro.
I'm staying. And next, at long last, our vacancy local law, proposal of law number seven, thirteen. Any further discussions, this comes with a lot of vetting and rewriting, to every pre-approval. Do I have an introduction in a second? Rich? Tiffany? Roll call vote please.
Alvin Bouyan.
Aye.
Karika.
Aye.
Hallery.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo. Presenti Pedro.
I'm staying. So congratulations to all the work on that, on that, on that. Any new business council members would like to raise?
Just a question, not necessarily new business right now, but process-wise, and maybe this is for you, where are we as a council? When will the whole Hall Road and what's going on and isn't going on? It seems as though the last I can recall, the planning committee, I mean vice of council, said, let the council determine where the boundaries are of that, if I remember that. If I don't remember it correctly, you'll see why I'm asking the question, but where are we with that whole issue and when and how will it come to us, or if it will?
Well, I mean, there are a lot of different moving parts, so, you know, there was a determination made by the zoning board, P O, with regard to an interpretation of the code, so they made that interpretation. That was their finding, you know, that was kind of the end of their deliberation on the issue regarding that. You know, certainly, the council is always free to look at the zoning code and look at the definitions of zoning districts and consider where there may need to be changes for us, and you have the ability to do that, so that's one. With regard to any sort of work or activity that's occurred on the Hall Road, that is something that Craig gave looked at, is my understanding, as made some determinations of it, I know he was in consultation, I believe he was in consultation with the assistant city attorney, who was handling the planning workbench prior to litigation, so, you know, in my mind, that particular issue is not something that necessarily middle or should come to the council, because Craig is charged as the officer of jurisdiction to make determinations on it. And then the third piece of the triangle is certainly the litigation that's been ongoing, for which we are still waiting for a decision on both, you know, the city's action, Article seventy-eight with regard to the town reports decision, as well as the Article seventy-eight for our council.
Oh, perhaps, I don't think the council should consider taking up and looking at the language specifically in the C R as to what exactly the code enforcement officer's role and interpretation is to clarify going forward, because it seems, you read it one way, it seems that any action there requires not his interpretation, his immediate alerting of the planning board that activity is occurring, so I think it could be with us to clarify what exactly that means in the C R, the resolution, to say any further activity to taking upon himself, as well as the code enforcement officer, it could perhaps it might be worth it for us to clarify.
I think maybe that'll follow your review on the legal committee, become some kind of resolution if you like. I'd like to make a small statement, as you know, we're starting the B E A, the budget process. I am your representative as a city council, I'm a committee of three, the mayor, myself, and the treasurer. In the past, as you know, it's always been said that we can't add when it comes to the council, and that's true, by the time the final budget comes, we can't add anything, we can only subtract. The point is, we could add anything we'd like right now, and now, more than ever, this budget process is open, all meetings are being listed, if you have a special interest, let's say your interest is with the youth committee, the day the youth will be making their presentation, you can be there. Now whether you'll be able to participate is an open question. More importantly, if you tell me what you would like to see, I can speak for you in that process, that's how it's got to work. Otherwise, you know, it can't be just an open discussion, there had every meeting, and it doesn't have to be by open meeting rules. Fortunately, we got a going for Andy that B E A does in fact have to follow open meeting rules, so this is a sea change really for the city of Hudson, that this process will be in the open. Just that, so if you want to email me special concerns, or tell me your special concerns, or to show at the meeting that, and let me know what it is you want to see in that budget, because we can in effect add to the budget, but we have to do it now, we can't do it when the budget is presented to us November.
We can just reject it.
We can only reject it or take away. Yes, but workshops, all those workshops are on the counter with the subject matter, so you'll know, but, you know, there's a possibility you will not be able to speak as individual members, so if you have to know ahead of time what it is you want to see, I'll make sure it's represented, because that's the point of my presence on that board as one of the three groups representing, three parts of local government.
Tom, I think that's, that's what we found at our meetings meeting, so Heather has loaded most of that, most of the requests onto Open Gov, so for those that have been on Open Gov, the information's out there now, so you can see what departments requesting ones, so, for, were you able to come to the Open Gov last month? You didn't?
No, I didn't.
So it is there, so for anybody in public, Open Gov's got that information there, so...
And if it's not broken down, that's finally, if you'd like to see it, also let me know that, because I know, for example, that in past budgets, you'll see that person on the surface line, what does it mean? It's a catch-all for so many different things, we need to break these things down so that we all understand exactly what's being paid for what. John?
Since for the business, just to report that I had a fairly positive meeting at the planning board last week discussing local law and provisions progress, once they recommend, once they present their full recommendations to the council, seems rather positive, I think, there's some interesting things that could be done in terms of perhaps it asks for the local law.
Local law number five.
Yeah. That would involve some of the talk about smart codes, foreign selling, perhaps B D S, is a role model here, for lack of a word. And then that brings me to the further point that I think for the next meeting, the legal will work out, we should develop a planning zoning task force that could kind of, that has to drive the, strongly the planning zone direction right forward, these deep comprehensive plan, where else would even talk, you know, so take a positive step forward with that work I'm expecting this month.
Okay, thank you.
I have two comments, Tom.
Sorry, Tom?
I have two comments.
Yes.
First, what being the friends of Oakdale and the H V I will be holding a community workshop on October thirteenth to talk about the redesign of Oakdale, so they want everyone to attend, while everyone from the council to definitely attend, this is something that's full of transparency, so if you'd like to see something happen at Oakdale, or if you ever had a passion of bringing some kind of energy to the city, I would definitely attend this workshop. The second thing being that, for you being our representative, Tom, I hope you take into consideration with the youth center that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and I'm not just saying the building, but the programming and with things that go wrong, and I want a budget for future emergencies, so that when the furnace breaks or something happens, like we're not coming back to the council and our kids have to wait two, three months in the freezing cold youth center for something, so I want to take that into consideration, if we can find money for everything else, we have to invest into our youth.
Well, could you send that to us?
Yes, I can, I got a few copies up here that I can send around, you can also reach out to Tamara Adler, who spearheading our friends of Oakdale, and I feel like this has to be said as well, but there's a lot of progress that has taken place at the youth center, their staff, and they do a really hard job that they have to do, this is all like social things that they have to deal with every day, and they don't get enough credit for that. I want to also give a shout out to Peter Frank and the friends of, who are also, you know, doing an amazing job and bringing in for program, we had a really great summer, and you don't really hear that being highlighted, and if that was any of the other departments that it would clearly be talked about, and everybody would be clapping. That's all.
When is that date again?
October thirteenth, here at the library, from three to six, and there's childcare food and refreshments provided.
I'm going to ask for a request, being that we all have children in our ward, can we send the parents to youth, call the youth department, I see there's transportation now for the kids, maybe we can get some transportation that night, so we can hear from the parents and get some of their input as well?
I can have, I mean, I'm, that's all we can, but I think that could definitely put it out.
Tom, could I, could I interrupt on that, just for a second, I have some more? I'd also like to say, you know, hats off to Peter and the friends of Hudson Youth. Last weekend was the kickoff for the soccer league, it was absolutely phenomenal, there were a hundred kids there, at least one or two adults per kid, so there were like three hundred kids on the field, and there were really good games from the P Vs all the way up to the, to those that are knocking each other down on the field, it was really good. Ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, every Saturday, Green Court, what's it called, Green Court Field?
Town Park.
Town Park, you know, please come every weekend, it's absolutely, it's a blast. Thank you, Tom.
What team should we root for, Ron?
I don't know. No comment. I'm staying.
In case you don't know, Ron, business is a sponsor of our team. So thank you all for, any other member, council member comments?
I just want to invite everyone on the twenty-second this Saturday at this library for S B K's sixth anniversary event, so please show up and come and enjoy, we have some special treats today evening, so please come and enjoy with us.
Thank you. Have everybody, have their say in public. Peter Frank, much to discuss, Peter Frank.
I just wanted to follow up on Tiffany's comment about parents, there is going to be childcare available for that event.
Is available.
Childcare is being available for that.
At the site?
It's here.
Yeah.
Oh, it's here?
The workshop is here, and I think it's in the afternoon and childcare is available, so it is family-friendly.
Anybody else in the public, a little mayor has something to say? Right across?
I was here before, I'm looking for crosswalks for Third Street corner, Third State, it's really dangerous there, we need some help for our pedestrians, coming around that corner is really rough.
Thank you.
I think, I know, wait, I may, it's on the agenda for tomorrow night's meeting, and we'll keep it in open business till it gets done, second and state.
I hope it pays, don't run out of paint.
We do what we can.
Okay.
Second and state and third and state.
Thank you.
Yep, and we'll just keep it right there, maybe we'll make the font bigger if it sits too long.
Mayors, do you have something?
Yes, I would also like to acknowledge, as far as the youth department, Kamal's involvement, and I think he's made a nice change with the committee, and looking at the, not only just the youth department, the building, but youth in general, the city of Hudson. And secondly, as far as ADA, many of you know, no, no, but this week, the city of Hudson and Galvin Foundation are putting two, four handicap parking spaces around the library, and that construct, that will start Thursday this week.
Anyone else in the public? Yes, do you want to identify yourself, please?
Bill Houston, City of Hudson, I'm just curious, is the council going to ultimately take up the issue of improved sidewalks throughout town?
Yes.
And so there, does it have, does it have to be passed as a law, is that the process?
Well, there's a couple things going on, first of all, everything in the D R I district is automatically covered by, the sidewalks there will be taken care of through the D R I process, now, how the west of the city will be taken care of, maybe we can piggyback from that experience and figure out how to fund the rest of the sidewalk? Yes, sure.
We brought this up at the housing and transportation meeting last week, I believe, there was, you know, a lady from Providence Hall wrote up the issue of the sidewalks and how it's difficult to be in a wheelchair on sidewalks, so I had the discussion, brief discussion with our city attorney, and we're working on, so the advice of the attorney is to analyze which streets are, have the most damage, which ones have the limited cut corners, so we can get a map of it, you know, on who else is going to work on that, but those are the steps that we're taking thus far, so the issue is not on the back burner, we are discussing, and you're welcome to come to our next housing and transportation meeting, if you want to work with us on analyzing these streets, please do, and we talked about also, maybe going to the businesses first before the property owners, and looking into and looking into grants to possibly help the property owners with their sidewalks.
So do we know when the council's going to start taking up the issue, do you have any idea?
I don't know, I understand.
So was there discussion about it tonight?
What's to be discussed, I'd like to hear your say.
I don't know, I just, I read that.
It has, it has come from the committee, once the committee, full committee makes a voting decision on what to bring forward to the council, that's when we come to the council. But right now, the housing and transportation committee is working on.
The council isn't taking it up right now, is that correct?
Part of the council is on the committee, yes.
Okay. I would suggest, I've done a little research about this myself, that, I don't know who's involved, but you go to the City of Rochester, excuse me, Syracuse website, and they have a whole process of improving sidewalks in the town. This, I think, is the way to go.
City of Syracuse?
Yeah.
I know, we've been talking to some people out of Troy as well, thank you.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Are we better?
Yeah.